Buenos días. Buenos días. Hoy es miércoles, 1 de junio. Esta es una reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Nos reunimos martes, viernes y jueves. El primer miércoles del mes. Estamos aquí en la sala de la ciudad de Van Nuys. Y tenemos una sala completa. Es bueno ver a todos ustedes. Todavía estamos esperando un pleno. Esperamos que el miembro del Consejo, Labanj, y el señor Wesson lleguen momentáneamente.
Sí.
Bien, la señora Rosendahl, veremos eso. Gracias. Así que para nuestra primera presentación, le pediré al señor Zine si quiera asistir. Y luego el señor Cardenas será nuestro siguiente presentador después de eso.
Bien. Y vamos a ir con la señora Gruehl para la primera presentación.
Muchas gracias, señor Zine. Son como con sentimientos mixtos hoy que presento una proclamación a Abby Greenspan de mi oficina, que está aquí. Abby me llegó hace dos años. Y aunque vino de USC, fue bien. Que la tuvimos en el personal. Tengo algunos de esos, aunque soy bruina. Pero Abby era solo una graduada reciente. Y decidió que estaba interesada en ser una deputada de planificación. Y tengo que decirle que, ya saben, pensamos, bueno, va a ser buena. Dale Thrush la entrenará y, ya saben, podrá ayudarle en algunas cosas. Bueno, durante estos últimos dos años, Abby ha sido una deputada extraordinaria de planificación. Ella es alguien que ha estado saliendo a las reuniones. Tengo un distrito difícil y muchos problemas. Y si es alguna indicación, Abby envió un correo electrónico hace una semana, dejando a la comunidad saber que iba a ir a la escuela de gradua o a la escuela de derecho. Y recibió correos de algunos de nuestros más fuertes, más fuertes constituyentes, que son, y justamente así, exigentes y defensores, diciendo cuánto a Abby le significaba y cuánto maravilloso había sido como deputada de planificación. Pero para todos nosotros en nuestra oficina, ella es mucho más que solo una deputada de planificación. Ha convertido en parte de nuestra familia. Y como pueden ver, todos mis personal aquí salieron de downtown para estar aquí. Su mamá está aquí. Están literalmente volando un avión tan pronto como un vuelo justo después de esta reunión. Y es por eso que estamos presentando esto a ella primero. Pero quería leer un poco de la proclamación que escribimos para ella. Mientras Abby Greenspan se unió al equipo del Distrito del Consejo de la Ciudad de los Ángeles el 31 de mayo de 2005, dedicó innumerables horas, noches y fines de semana para abordar problemas de planificación en la valle de San Fernando. Pasó su primer día de trabajo cuando comenzó, escuchando pacientemente a los constituyentes hasta las 9:30 p.m. Y me preguntó: ¿Cada día es así? Y yo era honesta y dije: Sí, cada día es así hasta las 9:30 p.m. Pero ella también habla de su intolerancia inestable y firme con todos los constituyentes frente a problemas de contención y a menudo, oh, no voy a decir esa parte que pusimos aquí. (Risas). Esto fue muy honesto en esta proclamación que escribimos. Pero ella ha tenido un imprimido y marca en el paisaje de Los Ángeles. Y muchas de las cosas en las que ha luchado por nuestros constituyentes, se ha levantado por ellos, ha sido realmente increíble. Y así, a cargo de no solo el Consejo de la Ciudad entero, pero también del jefe, del controlador y del abogado de la ciudad, les agradecemos por ser una hermosa miembro de nuestro personal. Y sé que ella también va a volver a Los Ángeles en algún momento en el tiempo. Y con suerte volverá a trabajar para mí mientras se gana aún más experiencia. Así que a cargo de todos nosotros, a cargo de nuestro personal y de muchos que no pudieron estar aquí hoy, Abby, gracias por todo lo que has hecho. Has sido una increíble miembro de nuestro personal. Así que si pudiera pedirle a todos darle una gran aplauso.
Gracias. Muchas gracias. Pueden decir algo. ¿Lo hacemos? Es un poco tímida algunos días hasta, ya saben, cuando se ve en frente de una planificación. No, solo quiero agradecer al miembro del Consejo. Ha sido una experiencia maravillosa. Ha habido mucho crecimiento. He aprendido a probar y mejorar mi自 every day en el trabajo. Y es una experiencia maravillosa. No podía pedirle nada más. Wendy ha sido genial y he estado trabajando con el personal más brillante y trabajador en la sala de la ciudad. Así que gracias.
Sí. Bien. Quiero... ¿Dónde está tu madre? ¿Dónde está tu madre? Esto es, ya saben, como madre ahora, ya saben, tienen que reconocer a las madres. Así que esta es la madre de Abby que está aquí de Nueva York, ¿verdad?
Maryland.
Maryland, de la parte de atrás. Así que gracias por permitirnos tener a tu hija por un tiempo y por favor cuida de ella para nosotros.
Lo haré. Sé que quiere volver.
Bien. Muchas gracias, señor Zine, y creo que el señor Cardenas será nuestro siguiente presentador.
Sí, lo es. Muchas gracias y felicidades. El miembro Tony Cardenas para nuestra próxima presentación. Entiendo, miembro Cardenas, que su grupo se acerca al asiento.
Me da gran honor y placer recibir a un conocido humano, hermoso, Rigoberta Menchutum, en las alcaldías de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Quiero invitar al miembro Alarcon. Creo que Weisad es excusado. Los miembros latinos del Consejo, Garcetti, por favor vengan y me unan al asiento aquí. Tenemos el placer y el honor en la ciudad de Los Ángeles de recibir y honrar a la señora Rigoberta Menchutum por participar en la Vez Anual Feria del Libro, que tendrá lugar mañana todo el día en la ciudad de Los Ángeles y en la sala de la ciudad. Y esto va a ser una feria de liderazgo y defensa de la literatura en Los Ángeles. La feria de liderazgo será llevada a cabo ese día de 10 a 5 mañana en los pasillos sur de la sala de la ciudad y en la calle principal. Pero más importante, el gran marshall de la evento de mañana, la persona que están honrando mañana en nuestro evento anual es Rigoberta Menchutum. Rigoberta Menchutum es un indio quiche que nació en un pueblo indio en las montañas de Guatemala y creció en la cultura indiana, solo aprendiendo español como adulto. Rigoberta eligió dedicarse a su trabajo político y social para su pueblo. Su lucha por mejorar la vida de todos los pueblos indígenas le ganó la admiración del mundo y eventualmente el Premio Nobel en 1992. En su autobiografía, que ha sido traducida en 22 idiomas, describe las luchas de los pueblos indígenas y las dificultades de crecer como niño en Guatemala. Recibió el Premio Nobel en 1992, siendo la primera puesta en pie y la persona más joven de todos los tiempos para recibir esta distinción. Rigoberta Menchutum nació en 1959 en el pueblo de Chimal, Guatemala, una comunidad continuando la antigua cultura maya quiche. En su juventud trabajó en campos y luego en la ciudad como empleado doméstico. Vivió en medio de la injusticia, la miseria y la discriminación sofridas por los pueblos indígenas de Guatemala. Varios miembros de su familia fueron torturados y asesinados por las represivas fuerzas armadas. Perseguidas, Rigoberta fue exiliada a México en 1980. Self educada, se ha mostrado a sí misma como líder natural de gran inteligencia. Se convirtió en un activo trabajador político en el trabajo campesino y grupos de derechos humanos, así como en la defensa y promoción de los derechos y valores de los pueblos indígenas en todas partes. En 1983, su libro testimonial, "Yo, Rigoberta Menchutum, una mujer indiana en Guatemala", fue publicado, seguido de varios de sus textos y poemas. A través de su trabajo, Rigoberta ha recibido reconocimiento global y varios doctoratos honorarios. En 1993, fue nominado por las Naciones Unidas como embajadora de bienestar para el Año Internacional de los Pueblos Indígenas. En este momento, es promotor de la Decada Internacional de los Pueblos Indígenas, mandada por la Asamblea General de las Naciones Unidas, y también fue designada para ser el asesor personal al director general de UNESCO. Concurrentemente, preside sobre la iniciativa indígena de paz. En su trabajo social y político, siempre ha tenido en mente que el objetivo a largo plazo de la lucha es la paz. Hoy, Rigoberta Menchutum se destaca como un símbolo de paz y reconciliación y reconciliación entre líneas de división etnica, cultural y social en su propio país, en el continente americano y en todo el mundo. Quiero agradecer a mi colega José Weisad, que no podía estar aquí hoy, por preguntarme si me hacía esta presentación en su lugar. Creo que es muy importante para nosotros entender la grandeza y la presencia de Rigoberta Menchutum. Para mí, ella esfuerza todo lo que cualquier ser humano desea ser. Ella esfuerza todo lo que nuestros padres, cuando se miraron nuestros ojos cuando nacimos, que todos nuestros padres nos quieren ser. Me recuerda a gente que han sido mis héroes en mi vida, Cesar Chavez, Dr. Martin Luther King, Mahatma Gandhi. Estos son individuos que demostraron que al dar de ellos mismos y al pensar en todos los demás y al pensar en ellos mismos lo menos, han podido crear grandeza dentro de su presencia y crear una conciencia más allá de lo que muchos seres humanos podrían nunca lograr. Para mí, Rigoberta Menchutum es un ser humano como nadie. Ella es un ser humano que realmente se puede ver y darse cuenta de que es única, es especial, y ella esfuerza eso que todos queremos esfuerzar, al menos de una forma pequeña, en todos los días de nuestras vidas. Rigoberta Menchutum es un gran individuo y estamos honrados de tenerla en nuestra presencia. Y en este momento, me gustaría darle a algunos de mis otros colegas la oportunidad de hablar antes de presentarla con su resolución y darle la oportunidad de hablar. Madre Presidente, me gustaría pedir que suspendamos el tiempo permitido para que nuestros invitados hagan el discurso de la señora Rigoberta Menchutum en esta presentación especial. Gracias.
Sí.
¿El miembro Alarcon?
Lo harán. Gracias, señor Alarcon.
Miembros y personas en la audiencia, demasiado a menudo tomamos por claro nuestra libertad de expresión y de pensamiento en este país. De hecho, más recientemente hemos causado varias audiencias y investigaciones importantes cada vez que percibimos que los derechos de alguien podrían haber sido violados. Demostran la diferencia que tenemos en muchos sentidos de otros países donde la libertad de pensamiento y expresión y de expresión son repressivas. Rigoberta Menchutum representa ese combate por la libertad de expresión, ese combate por la libertad de expresión y ese combate para expresar tus derechos civiles en luchar por la humanidad y un mundo más justo. Pero para nuestros propósitos, estamos honrados de que ella sea el gran marshall de la Feria del Libro. La Feria del Libro representa un esfuerzo para expandir más plenamente las oportunidades de la literatura en particular en la población latina en Los Ángeles. Y expresa nuestro deseo de que la noción de una democracia informada sea absolutamente esencial y que reconozcamos que aquellos que leen libros que no necesariamente son de lengua inglesa o cultura inglesa, que de hecho contribuye a nuestra democracia para que las personas entiendan a sí mismas de su propia manera, de su propia cultura, de su propia historia. Y esa es una contribución a Estados Unidos. Así que realmente estamos honrados de tener la presencia de este nobel laureate que realmente está luchando por la paz. Cuando lucha por la paz en Guatemala, su mensaje resuena en todo el mundo. Y espero que por nuestra expresión de respeto y honor por ella hoy, también estamos contribuyendo a la paz en todo el mundo. No creo que haya algo ilegal mencionando que ella es candidata para presidente en el país de Guatemala, pero si hay, no lo mencionaré. Pero ciertamente, su candidatura aumentará el nivel de debate en ese país. También aumentará la estatua de las libertades civiles que todos los países deben luchar por y que este país realmente representa.
Muchas gracias, señor Alarcon.
Gracias. Una vez más, es un honor de mi parte ser capaz de introducir a este hermoso ser humano a todos ustedes y darle la oportunidad de decir algunas palabras. Pero una vez más, ella es un individuo que esfuerza humildad. Ella es un individuo que esfuerza fuerza. Ella es un individuo que ciertamente exude algo que es relevante para la compasión en todo lo que hace. Y además de eso, tiene algo que todos queremos aspirar, y eso es tener fe en la no violencia y la fe de que puedes cambiar el mundo al ser lo mejor que puedas y sin tener que levantar brazos y poder abrir tus brazos y agradecer tanto a tu enemigo y agradecer tanto a tu amigo para asegurar que tengamos un ser humano mejor en nosotros mismos y un mundo mejor para todos nosotros. Así que una vez más, con mucho gusto, quiero introducir a todos ustedes a la señora Rigoberta Menchutum.
Muchas gracias. Buenos días. Necesito interpretar y presentar.
También puede hablar en español.
Está bien. Gracias. En primer lugar, yo quisiera agradecer profundamente esta amistad, este aprecio mutuo porque yo quiero mucho a la gente aquí en Los Ángeles, quiero a los niños, los jóvenes, y quiero prometer a esta parte de la humanidad, la lucha siempre por la solidaridad, la solidaridad entre nuestros pueblos, la solidaridad por causas comunes, especialmente por la dignidad de la gente que lucha por la vida, que piensa en un mundo mejor, que trabaja por sus derechos y que lucha por hacer un futuro más digno para la humanidad en general. Gracias por ese reconocimiento porque solo así podemos sacar esta humanidad que tiene muchísimos problemas, especialmente problemas también con la madre naturaleza, con la vida, con las culturas, con los pueblos. Creo que va a traducir Madeleine.
Quiero agradecerle muy profundamente por su amistad, por este aprecio mutuo que se ha expresado porque quiero decir que amo Los Ángeles, amo a los niños de Los Ángeles, amo a los jóvenes. Y quiero prometer mi solidaridad a ustedes, solidaridad entre nuestros pueblos, solidaridad en causas comunes, solidaridad en nuestra lucha por la dignidad, por la dignidad de la vida, por un mundo mejor. Y quiero decir que trabajar por un mejor mundo para la humanidad es algo que hemos estado trabajando por mucho tiempo. Y la humanidad tiene muchos problemas. Tenemos problemas con la madre naturaleza, tenemos problemas con la vida, tenemos problemas en términos de nuestras culturas y en términos de nuestras relaciones entre los pueblos.
Los seres humanos nacemos con una misión y esa misión de liderazgo que nos toca hacer las cosas mejores todos los días. Y estoy segura que la autoestima de nuestra juventud se basa en los ejemplos que nosotros dejamos. Somos pasajeros en este mundo y este mundo nos pertenece siempre y cuando la cuidemos y siempre y cuando trabajemos por los mejores ejemplos. Y yo quiero decir a las mujeres que es muy importante que sigan luchando por sus derechos, que los niños sepan que necesitamos vivir de dos grandes fortunas, la fortuna espiritual y la fortuna material. Que ellos sepan que no es posible la vida si vivimos en un desequilibrio. Y que podamos escribir más y más libros que tengan valores, valores de la familia, valores de la comunidad. Y por eso estoy aquí el día de hoy para participar en esa necesidad de que nuestros conocimientos también sean coherentes con nuestra vida y nuestra forma de vida.
Así que quiero decir que los humanos nacen con una misión y es una misión de liderazgo para ser mejores cada día. El autoestima de nuestros hijos se basa en gran medida en el ejemplo que... The self-esteem of our children is based in large measure on the example that we live. We are temporary in this world, but the world is ours if we care for it and if we work to make a better example. I also want to say to the women here that it is important to continue struggling for your rights, and it is important to transmit to our children that we have two basic foundations for our lives. One is the spiritual and the other is the material, and we cannot have life unless we have that type of equilibrium. And so I am hoping that we will be publishing many, many books, many more books, books with values, books with values about families and culture. And so today, I want to say that it is a joy to be participating here, and it is important that our knowledge be based on the value of life.
Bueno, yo vengo de una cultura milenaria, que es la cultura Maya. Todos ustedes conocen la grandeza de esa cultura, y esa cultura no está muerta. Especialmente el día de hoy es el Nahuatl de la Justicia, es el Nahuatl de los escribanos, de los jueces, de los secretarios, de las autoridades, y es tan hermoso celebrar este día aquí en Los Angeles. Yo deseo para toda la gente de aquí muchos éxitos en la vida, sobre todo a todos los compatriotas guatemaltecos, centroamericanos, latinoamericanos, que aquí confluyen. Y pido a ustedes que sigan luchando por ellos, por sus derechos, por su dignidad, y que sigan adelante. Gracias por esta amistad. Espero que este día también quede escrito en una profunda amistad con los pueblos indígenas de Guatemala, con los guatemaltecos en general, y con los centroamericanos. Que vivan las mujeres, que vivan los niños, que vivan los jóvenes, y que vivan la amistad entre nuestros pueblos. Gracias.
I come from a culture that dates back for thousands of years. Is this son? I come from a culture that dates back for thousands of years, from the Mayan culture. It is a culture of greatness. It is not a dead culture. Today, on the Mayan calendar, is the day of justice. It is the day of the clerks and the judges and the authorities, and it is beautiful to be able to celebrate it here in Los Angeles. And so I wish everyone great success in life, and I want people to continue working for and acknowledging the Guatemalans, the Central Americans, the Latin Americans that have come to this place as I do now, and I wish that you will fight for their rights and fight for their dignities and keep going ahead. And I want to thank you for your friendship, and I hope that we will continue to be writing in a positive way for the indigenous peoples of Guatemala, for all the people of Guatemala, and for all the people of Central America. So long live the women, long live the children, long live the youth, and long live the friendship among our peoples.
At this time, I'd like to ask the representative from Feria de Libro to come forward and say a few words on behalf of the organization and to also mention the sponsors. And we do apologize, that's what happens when you get somebody bigger than you. We spend most of our time talking about that wonderful human being, and then yet, we only leave a little bit of time for you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Good morning, Mrs. Skrul and all the city council. I come to you today for a very different occasion. The last time we met, we were talking about the governance issues of the Los Angeles Unified School District. Today, I am here very proud as a representative of all of the organizations, the great city of Los Angeles, and the great Los Angeles Unified School District, who have joined in partnership for the fifth year to promote the book fair, which we call La Feria de Libro, a family book fair. It is at the steps of City Hall. This is the second year, and it is a rightful place for this feria, as we believe strongly that as city leaders, you must ensure the opportunity for all of its children, its youth, and its families to develop the highest literacy rates possible. We understand the connection between reading and books and a democratic society, and we promote the Feria de Libro because in many of your districts, we do not have bookstores. We do not have bookstores where children and their families can go buy books. We do not have enough libraries where they can go check out books. So we would like for you to join us in this advocacy for literacy to ensure that our future is there as a democratic society. That is what the book fair represents, and I want to thank you because you have, whether you can remember or not, you have allowed us to participate with a contribution from the city to waive the fees, and we ask that you continue to do it forever and ever. Amen. Thank you for hosting us. Thank you for allowing Rigoberta Menchu Tum to be here with you. We will be back next year with another author and to ask for more money and to ask for more support because we love you and we know that you love our children very much. Thank you so much.
By way of introduction, I'd like to introduce the students from Burke Corona School in Pacoima. We want to thank them for being here. Of course, Burke Corona was a huge civil rights advocate in the state of California, but mostly in Los Angeles, and they honor us here with a presence. Their teacher, Haiti Trujillo, tells me that she is preparing an entire month's lesson on leaders such as Rigoberta Menchu to educate the kids about what is important to believe in and fight for about the things that you hold most dear. And so we want to commend her for her leadership, for her children, and we know that there are many, many Burke Coronas and Rigoberta Menchus in that audience right there.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Alarcon, for recognizing our young kids in the room. Also, it's important for us to remember that Feria is being sponsored by the city of Los Angeles and also Telemundo, WAMU, Washington Mutual, La Opinión, Disney, Channel 4, Target, and many, many other wonderful sponsors who believe in the literacy of our children and of our community. So with that, it's time for us to give the resolution to our honored guest, Rigoberta Menchu Tum, and I will translate for her all of these words as in our towels. Esto lo que dice en total es que viva Rigoberta Menchu de parte de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and to all of the sponsors. And I know it was a great success last year. Look forward to it. I'll be there tomorrow morning after T-ball, but we'll be there with my son. We all know how important books are and being able to read and to read into your child, and so this event is going to be another way in which to...
Mrs. Skrul, we brought two posters for each of our council officers here for all of your offices, one for your City Hall office and another for your out-in-the-field office. Thank you very much. And we also have... Yes, you're holding the poster.
I was gonna say, maybe they can show the camera. We can show this beautiful poster if you can come to me.
It shows Rigoberta with children reading. So again, we thank you. We want to thank all of our sponsors and the city and the Los Angeles Unified School District. Thank you very much, and thank you for the other recognition that we have for our sponsors. We don't have time to do all of that, but we thank you again.
Thank you very much, and for the students, and I know, I think Channel 35 will now come up. This is the beautiful poster that they put together that celebrates tomorrow in the book fair. We want to remind everyone, it is tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Los Angeles City Hall, First and Main Street. And again, thank you to all of the sponsors I know that made this possible as well. Mr. Cardenas had our next presentation, but I think he is taking pictures. So are you ready, Mr. Zine? I'll acknowledge Mr. Zine for our next presentation.
I've got two wonderful schools. Obviously, these students have done extremely well at both of the schools in my district, and the first school we're going to recognize and honor is Taft High School. If I can get the Taft High School... Taft High School Boys Tennis to come forward, the boys tennis team. Come on down. Come on forward, gentlemen. The Taft High School Boys Tennis victorious in the championship match of the 2007 tennis playoffs for the Los Angeles section of the California Classic Federation, the CIF. They were the co-league champions of the West Valley League with a nine-to-one record, completed their Boys Tennis City Championship with a record of 15 wins and only one loss. This is the first tennis championship at Taft since 2001. The city of Los Angeles City Council hereby congratulates Taft High School Boys Tennis on their successful victory, and you, I understand, are the coach? Come on forward for a couple of words from the coach.
Oh, thanks a lot. I didn't expect this. By the way, it was the first championship since 1983. That was an invitational championship. But anyway, our guys, besides their talent, they won with heart, and we weren't expected to win it, and it was something that I won't forget and they won't forget either. So thanks a lot for inviting us out today.
Thank you. Taft High School Boys Tennis. We're gonna get close to a real quick picture before we do the next presentation. Come on, Coach. Come on in here, everybody. Gather round. How's that?
You guys, you guys, it's gonna be fun.
Yeah, down, down, baby, down. But not that far down. We got it?
You got me, respect?
All right. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
There you go, Coach. And also from Taft High School, the Taft High School Boys Track and Field, come on down. They're not here.
They must be running from Taft to get here.
All right. Well, they're being acknowledged, but they're not here. What happened to them?
They're at the state championship.
They're at the state championship. All right. Well, let's mention it anyway. Taft High School Boys Track and Field victorious in the championship meet of 2006-2007 Boys Track and Field Finals, Los Angeles section of the CIF. They are league champions of the West Valley League in 2006 with a five-zero record, completed their Boys Track and Field City Championship with a record 15 wins and five losses in 2006, and a record eight wins and only one loss in 2007, and we congratulate the Taft High School Boys Track and Field Team. And the next group, come down. It is the Taft High School Girls Volleyball Team. Come on down, ladies. Taft High School Girls Volleyball Team victorious in the championship match of the 2006 playoffs for the Los Angeles section of the CIF. This is the first-ever Girls Volleyball City Championship at Taft High School history. League champions of the West Valley League with an incredible ten-zero record, 10 wins, zero losses, completed the Girls Volleyball City Championships even with a record 32 wins and four losses, and we congratulate the Taft High School Girls Volleyball Team and the coach. Where the coach? Come on up, Coach. Come on down.
All right, all right. I want to thank the city of Los Angeles for inviting us here. It is quite unexpected, and it's very nice for you guys to do it. These girls committed three years, maybe four, just to bring a championship to Taft High School, and we wouldn't be here with these 14 girls. So once again, we'd like to thank all of you. Thank you.
All right. Grab it down for pitching now. Ladies, come on in, close for photo. Photo time with the... Everybody there?
Thank you.
There you go. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
And the final group, from Taft High School, Taft High School Girls Basketball Team. The basketball team was victorious in the championship game 2006-2007 playoffs for the Los Angeles section of the CIF, the first San Fernando Valley high school to win the Los Angeles City Section Major Division Girls Basketball Championship in 22 years. You didn't know that?
No.
And none of you were here 22 years ago, anyway. They were the league champions of the West Valley League with a 10-zero record, 10 wins, zero losses, completed their Girls Basketball City Championship season with a record 24 wins in a row and three losses, and the city council congratulates the Taft High School Girls Basketball Team for bringing that title to Taft High School. And the coach?
I'd like to thank the council members and Councilman Zine. I had the pleasure a couple of years ago flipping pancakes with him at our annual pancake breakfast. It's been a tremendous honor. The girls have put in a tremendous amount of time and effort to lead us to this first ever city championship. And on behalf of the school, as the athletic director, I would also like to accept the track and field certificate and say this is the first time in the history of L.A. Unified that any high school has won four varsity city championships in one school year, and a fifth in that our girls junior varsity volleyball team also won. So five city championships never happened in L.A. Unified. Again, thank you so much for having us down here.
Our pleasure. Everybody smile now, ladies. Can we see you? I hope we want to see you.
That was dope.
Who can't we see?
Ronnie.
Thank you so very much. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you. That's for the... Here's for the Boys Track and Field.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Quite... Oh, you're not done? Okay.
We're still recognizing the West San Fernando Valley. While we now turn from sports to academics, there's Taft High School, there's El Camino High. They both won national decathlons and obviously the athletic championships, and now we're going to bring forward the El Camino Real High School Academic Decathlon. El Camino High School. These students, obviously, did a lot of reading, and if we look at the newspaper articles, champs again. El Camino Real, fifth academic decathlon title. Finally, life's a beach for El Camino Real, because you guys get to go to Hawaii, and you went to Hawaii and laid on the beach for a week. Well, no, that's what everyone thought, but that's not what you did. The coach said, "I was nervous most of the time. I felt our biggest threat was," and always has been, Wisconsin, but it was Illinois." That was from the coach of the team. El Camino earns decathlon victory. Homecoming decathlon winners get El Camino welcome. This is a real honor, again, to recognize, and last year it was Taft High School, this year it's gone back and forth between Taft and El Camino. They won the Los Angeles Unified School District 2007 U.S. Academic Decathlon, giving the school its fifth national championship. This was a national championship victory once again for El Camino High. Let's hear it for El Camino High. I'm gonna have the coach come up and introduce the members. The United States Academic Decathlon was held in Honolulu, Hawaii. They got to go to Hawaii, and everyone thought they were gonna go there and enjoy the wonderful beaches in Hawaii, but what they did was study, and it was very successful. Approximately 350 student decathletes representing 39 teams from across the United States flexed their brain power in a two-day contest of academic strength. They competed quizzes in speech, interviews, essay, art, economics, language, literature, mathematics, music, social science, and super quiz, the oral relay. El Camino had an eight-member team scoring 5,205... I'm sorry. Scoring 52,148 points out of 60,000 possible, earned the L.A. Unified School District its fourth consecutive national title in 10... tenth U.S. title since 1986. In addition, their triumphant victory, the team was named winner of the super quiz combined relay and written competition. El Camino competed with only eight students after losing one member earlier in the school year. The team collected thirty-four individual prizes, the most of any thirty-nine teams competing this year, and it's with great pride, and once again, that we recognize and honor the decathlon winners, the national decathlon winners from El Camino. And we're gonna have the coach come forward for the introduction. Where are you, Coach? Come on, well, there you go. For the introduction of the students.
This is Jennifer Yu.
Jennifer? Take him out.
And Shayna Tao. Frank Sobranis.
Don't be shy, don't be shy, you're on television, okay?
And Franklin Yu.
And any comments from you? You are the coach.
I'm really, really proud of these kids. They've worked really hard.
And I understand, on the, when they went to the state championship, there was another school that won the state championship, and then they came in and won the national championship. Is that correct?
There was another school that won the city championship.
The city championship? That was Taft?
No, that was Granada.
Granada, Granada, okay. And then they went on to win the national, which is the big prize, so they won the national championship.
We won the national.
That's what I'm saying, you, El Camino. I'm not trying to get you confused. Here's a resolution from the City of Los Angeles, El Camino Real High School, United States Academic Decathlon Championship, 2007 champions. And what we will also do, in front of the school, we have these beautiful signs that are posted with the years won, and we also have signs that'll go inside the school with the students' names and the coaches' names. So, future generations will say, those are the folks. You can bring back your grandchildren someday and say, you know what? I was on the national decathlon team, and we won. So, congratulations to you all, and we have presentations for all of you, and we're gonna do a group photo right now. And then, Madam President, I'm sorry. Oh, you have something for me? I hope, something, maybe a book or something? What's book, it's book reading day, but you've read a lot, didn't you? You all read a lot. You're tired of reading, aren't ya?
Too much.
Too much. Time to go to Hawaii and relax.
I wanted to present this plaque on behalf of El Camino's Academic Decathlon Team to Councilman Zine for supporting us.
Thank you. Beautiful. Oh, look at that. United States Academic Decathlon National Finals. This was taken in Honolulu, Hawaii. Well, maybe we all get to go there, huh? Thank you, thank you very much. Let's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Uh, just one photo, and then we'll be complete.
They can hold their...
Okay, yeah, let's...
Okay. So, after those photos are taken, we'll acknowledge Mr. Cardenas for our next presentation.
Can I have you take off your stickers?
Yeah, no, stick your... He's gonna cover his thing. You know what? We're gonna do the photo on the side.
I'll steal my notes.
I'm not gonna steal your notes. Okay, we're clearing the stage. Madam President, the stage is now open.
Thank you so much. We'll acknowledge Mr. Cardenas for our next presentation.
Okay. Since Dennis started the theme on academics and schoolchildren, I'd like all of the girls to come forward from the Van Nuys volleyball team. We're recognizing these young ladies because they are the all-academic volleyball team that has been selected by the Los Angeles Volleyball Coaches Association. The girls are in the 12th grade. There are eleven of them. Are all of you here? Nope, not all of them. See, they're all studying. They're more into academics. The record at the end of the year was seventeen and six overall. They also went to the city quarterfinals, and also their coach, Bob Grella, is here to say a few words about how wonderful his team is and what a pleasure it is to be their coach.
Thank you very much. What I'd like to say, that we had eleven members on the team, but we only had four seniors, and all four, three of the girls that are here today and one other girl that couldn't make it this morning. Of our four seniors, all four seniors are part of the city scholar-athlete recognition, which means their career GPA at Van Nuys High School is 3.6 or higher. Three of our girls had 4.0s or better, and that's every one of our seniors on the volleyball team had 3.6 or better GPAs. So, they're not only outstanding athletes that did well in the city, but they did very well in the classroom, and we'd like to thank Mr. Cardenas for this presentation this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's important for us to recognize the four seniors. I'll tell you a little bit about their GPAs to embarrass all of us council members, 'cause when we were in school, there was no such thing as a four-point-plus. We couldn't even get 4.2s or what have you, but here we go. Nagin Shahande, GP, I can't even say her name, much less the GPA. GPA is 4.2, and she'll be attending UCLA in the fall.
That's her.
Dasha Pe...
Pescharova. Pescharova.
Pescharova, there's no V in here. Pescharova, okay. See, it's spelled wrong, it's not my fault. GPA, 4.1, and, oh my God, and she'll be attending USC in the fall.
Sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. They allow transfers, don't worry. Congratulations, congratulations. Megan McGrath with a GPA of 4.1, and she'll be attending UCLA in the fall.
She's not here.
She's not here?
She's not here.
Okay, so you're Lisette? Okay. The most special of all, my favorite, is Lisette Castañeda with a GPA of 3.6. That's more like me. But, more importantly, she is attending the best university in the world, University of California at Santa Barbara in the fall. Congratulations to you, young ladies. And we have some resolutions for every single one of you, just to show who they beat. They beat Grant High School, Poly High School, North Hollywood High School, Canoga Park High School, and Vidugo Hills High School. Those are the other high schools that are in their division. So, congratulations to Van Nuys High School and the women's volleyball team, and once again, congratulations on being role models. I think today oughta be the day of the woman, as we're recognizing so many outstanding young women and women from around the world here in the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations for representing us here in Van Nuys, and congratulations for making us so very proud.
Thank you. Very good, Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Colleagues, we are one short of a quorum. Ms. Hahn is on her way. She was excused. We were not, we were unaware of Mr. Laban's absence today, so we anticipated just having a bare quorum. If I can ask your indulgence, we do anticipate her within the next five to 10 minutes. We have several people who are here for part of this. If we could, we will take a slight break for Ms. Hahn to arrive. Thank you. Some of my colleagues suggest if any of you would like to stand and speak of my colleagues. City Attorney has advised, there's one other option, which is, although we don't have a quorum, we could take public comment, and that if the individual who's here for public comment is fine doing that without the full quorum. So, I will ask some of the people who are here for public comment. Yes, Dion.
Yeah, and just to elaborate, once we do get a quorum, council will still have to have another general public comment period also.
So, you'll accept, okay. Thank you, then, Candido. Okay. Susan Rocha, Susan Rocha was the first. Susan, would you like to speak before we have a quorum? Ms. Rocha?
I guess I might as well, because my dictator, Reyes, is not here today, and he gets to be dictator over the quality of life that I have, and this is really a communist state. If the government forces me to hear church organ music all day, or ding-dong from the church bullhorns that blast from on top of the church all day long, then this, this, this is communist, or this is, or maybe I'm living in Panama. Yeah, why should you guys have the authority to dictate what kind of music I listen to if I have to have ding-dong like a doorbell in my house? If I have to hear ding-dong like the clock's going off? What right does the government have to intrude on my life and force me to hear something that I don't wanna hear? And I don't have a right, I have, I can't turn it on and off, but yet you guys, because nobody wants to step on Ed Reyes's toes because he doesn't wanna do anything about it, you guys are also representing the government that forces me to hear ding-dong all day, and I don't wanna hear it anymore. But that's not right. That's not right that you guys get to choose what, what time I get up in the morning, what time the bells finish at night, what kind of organ music, church organ music I have to hear, "God Bless America," or whatever other choices that they pick for me. What kind of fairness is this? I'm asking you to change the noise law, put decibel limits so that it's not overly loud or hours of operation, or tell Divine Savior Church to knock it off, because I don't have a choice, and you guys are forcing it on me. That's not fair. It's not fair. Either this guy gets to dictate my life, which is what he gets to do.
Thank you.
He's a dictator, he gets to dictate.
Thank you. Your two minutes is up, ma'am. Rick Nightingale, would you like to speak now? Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Rick Nightingale. I think it's kinda bad that you come here once a month and you can't even make a forum, though. I'll may say that right up front, that I think you should be here at least once a week, on every Friday, you know, because it took, look, and when we first start to talk, and it's already 11 o'clock. The main thing why I'm here is about the Housing Department that you passed quite a while ago, the ordinance, that we, our family owns an apartment building, and they say that they mail out these notices for these inspections, and we don't get them. And now, we're on an $800 penalty because we didn't get the notifications to turn around and make the corrections that were barely anything on it, and now we're trying to fight to where we can turn around and get these corrections taken care of. In fact, I'm going on a meeting today, I'm kinda late, to go down to the Housing Department to call, talk to Mr. Duran, because your inspections come out, and we don't know about them. They don't notify us, they paste it on the building. We had an eviction going on for the person, they might've taken it down, I have no idea what happened. But, and then, then you can turn around and add a 250% surcharge? That is dictatorship, that you could turn around and pass on that kind of an interest that a normal person can't charge more than 12% on his money, and you could put 250% on a, on a fee, and then they say, well, how can, then you call around to find out how you can get it fixed, and nobody knows the answer? I have fifteen different heads of the department that don't tell you nothing, 'cause they don't know nothing, and they just keep putting you from person to person to person, and you call in the morning, nobody answers the phone, nobody returns the phone calls. I spend from 8:00 till 9:30, and then they're gone, and they don't return the phone calls when we do get ahold of them. So, we sit on the phone, and we keep hitting their phone number and hitting redial before it goes to an answering machine, and then you might get somebody. So, I appreciate you take care of them, but this 250% on the money is a little outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miriam Fogler?
Yes, good morning. I have a problem when I come here on Wednesdays with one of the General Services Security Guard. He keeps bothering me about that I can't have my water bottle here, when I see on the other side here that we're, that the council people can have water here and drinks and eat. So, what applies to, has to be for everybody or none at all? He's telling me I can't, I have to go out, I can't hardly walk on my feet, I have a hard time. So, I would like to have something, you know, concrete and writing, that somebody is gonna, you know, make sure that this General Service Security Guard, you know, sits here where the city attorney's sitting, to please let me, let me have my water here and, you know, and not bother me, 'cause everybody else drinks water at night here, so I don't wanna be the only, being singled out here, everybody, or none at all. We apply all the rules, the same thing like noise, same thing like building, what applies to the public applies to you. So, what you pass against everybody else, is it gonna affect you? So, I just don't want, you know, you wanna live under a system similar to the rest of the world, you'd be very happy we live in the United States of America. Here, we're having trouble with Venezuela and shutting down a television station for having a demonstration, and they were quelling their march, and here, our police officers should be supported. We're doing the opposite here. So, they, they should go back to Venezuela if these people complain about how bad it is here, they should go back to Venezuela. So, anyway, I didn't get to speak on some matters 11, 12, 13, 14 on Wednesday, because they just let another gentleman come up to speak on 14. I'd like to say a couple of good things. I support the Boys and Girls Club, and, you know, and I like, I like the things that you're doing here with the establishment of San Pedro Historic Waterfront, and then...
Thank you, I could ask you to conclude.
Okay, I just wanna say that, you know, number 14 is the only thing I don't like about, I support the bill, you know, SB 904, except one thing. It excludes restaurants, delis, and grocery stores from using biodegradable products.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it, so, on that, thank you. Donna Perman? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'm Donna Perman, a broken-hearted Garcetti fan. I like to say that sitting up, my heart is broken, 'cause Mr. Garcetti couldn't make it. I took awful work just to see him at Achen, but I'm glad you're here, Madam President. Anyway, let's talk about your good friend, the CRA and Big Development, who found, fund your reelection campaigns. You don't really care about the average voter and average homeowner. If you had your way, you would go through the entire agenda without input from the community, though you may think we're slightly amusing, ho, ho, here comes Zuma Dog, but not amusing enough to really hear what we say or let our views be a factor in your voting. Close the roll, tabulate the vote, 14 eyes, and let this go forthwith, and you give a sweetheart deal time order. Why do you let the CRA have such control over you? You automatically approve all CRA projects, occasionally asking questions, so it looks like you're thinking and questioning their policies, proposal, but you automatically approve all CRA projects. You should give that money over there to the city employees, like our sanitation workers, our police firefighters, and pay our teachers like professionals. Anyway, I wanted to say that the CRA promises jobs galore, but they don't give any permanent good-paying jobs with real benefits. They wanna get rich off the sweat of our poorest people who work real hard. Yeah, work, funny word, huh, Councilman? They get low pay and then the revolving door. They don't be fooled, we, we don't need the CRA. You guys have controlled the CRA before, and you can do that again, and once, we didn't even have them. So, as I said, let that money, they go, go to the city employees, 'cause a happy city, happy city employees means a happy city, and vice versa, and also, remember all the good things our police department do, and praise them too, and not only just correct them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Again, we do not have a quorum, so I appreciate those of you who'd like to speak today. Candido, we do anticipate Ms. Hahn momentarily.
Thank you, Madam President, council members. Again, I wanna thank the entire council for being here in the great San Fernando Valley. Everybody saw the paper, 30%, drop in gang slains. Now, you should take credit for that. The mayor should take credit for that. But let's give credit where credit is due. You know those officers that walk our streets, that are out there each and every day trying to protect us? Those are the same officers that were down in MacArthur Park. Different situation. None of us would like to have bottles and rocks and sticks thrown at us, but they are doing their job. So, again, welcome to the valley, and, but let's give credit, I mean, these, to be a police officer today is a very difficult situation, and it's easy, it's easy to beat up on somebody. You have an opportunity. If we bring forth all the information, if we really dig for the truth, I know Councilman Weiss had asked that this coming week, that they bring forth the, they bring forth the people that were in charge of that, and Carter, and I believe Egan, and I believe, I forget what the other, Gray. If they come forth and they get, give their side, I believe you have an opportunity to finally change things in the City of Los Angeles, and once we're done there improving the situation of the department, there, we can go to Department of Water and Power and take care of the issues there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Candido. Ms. Brewer, do you wish to speak at this time? Sharon Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Hi, Sharon Brewer, this is Public Safety Issues, Lake Balboa in CD6. I'm glad to see the councilman at his seat. I have been coming before City Council, telling you about the ongoing safety issues regarding illegally parked cars, especially the ones parked on the bike path. These cars are parked inside white posts that were put up to keep the cars out. On an average, there are 16 to 20 cars parked inside these markers. Most of these cars have their wheels on the bike path. This is a real safety issue for the children and adults using the bike path. I told you before that I have a picture of a car almost completely parked on the bike path. When is CD6 going to do something about the illegally parked cars at Lake Balboa? We need the cooperation of the Park Rangers, Office of Public Safety, and Department of Transportation to work together, ticket in tow, to stop the illegally parked cars. Ticketing the cars will generate funds for the city and hopefully stop the cars from parking illegally. Until these safety issues at Lake Balboa are dealt with, there needs to be a designated peace officer at the lake, at Lake Balboa on the weekends until these issues with the cars are taken care of. CD6, are you going to wait until a child gets seriously hurt and the family files a lawsuit before your office does something about these ongoing safety issues? Recreation and Parks, I see two people from Parks here now, needs to put up proper posts immediately to stop the cars from parking on the bike path. It's really getting bad over there, and the Office of Public Safety, they need help. There is nobody there on a constant basis to take care of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Daniel Geis, would you wish to speak? Okay, thank you.
Good morning, I wanted to bring your attention to an article from yesterday's LA Daily News. I handed a copy of it to Mr. Alarcon. It says, "Dog Menaced Kids at School and Nobody Came From Animal Services. Ed Bokes is Baffled." This is from yesterday's LA Daily News. Councilmember Gruel's, this is in Councilmember Gruel's district, 900 schoolchildren waited for 90 minutes for Ed Bokes to respond to a rottweiler on campus, and the school principal was held on hold, I'm sorry, from 7:55 in the morning to 9:05, at which point the principal had to call the police. So 900 schoolchildren in Councilmember Gruel's district at the Kestrel Elementary School were menaced by a rottweiler, and nobody from Animal Services came, and I'm going to quote from the article, "The kids were running and screaming, and they were scared." And this is a public safety issue, it was in the daily news, and 900 schoolchildren don't have a bone to pick with Animal Services, but you should, you should. I'm also concerned that next week, Mr. Bokes has a speaking engagement at a law firm called Manatt, Phelps &amp; Phillips in West LA, which has many partners who are registered lobbyists with the city of Los Angeles, but Mr. Bokes failed to advise all of the Animal Services Commissioners about his speaking engagement that is sponsored by this law firm, and I'm really concerned about what's going on there. You might want to know that Mr. Bokes is also avoiding an interview with a local TV news station, and I've asked the reporter at the local TV news station to come to each member of the City Council and find out why he can't get information, and why, for example, the brand-new East Valley Shelter is crowded, overcrowded. It opened last week, and it's already at capacity. So we don't have spay neuter clinics open? We don't have someone to respond to 900 schoolchildren in this area? In this area, 900 schoolchildren had to face a menacing rottweiler, as evidenced in yesterday's daily news, and Mr. Bokes is hosting, is having events at the law firms of lobbyists and not telling the Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Got a big problem ahead, folks, got a big problem. Thank you, thank you.
Daniel Weisman?
Well, if I wasn't sure, I could keep my hat on. Thank you very much. As you may have noticed, maybe you didn't notice, I just took, I just took some pictures because I've come before this group frequently on the issue of public comment, and I'm going to speak as a physician now, because I think there's an eye disorder going on. There's a lack of eye contact, there's a lack of eye recognition of the people here, and I'm looking around at the various council members to see if there is some eye contact between them and me. I live two blocks away from that animal shelter, and I'm concerned about its capacity. The nice thing about it, by the way, is that they have a 24-hour ability to receive animals that are lost or stray. Now, I'm going to take my hat off, because I'm going to put a different hat on, and that's the hat of the your neighborhood council people. I want to bring to your attention, in the time allowed to me, an issue that came up, huh? Sorry, I'm taking it off, because I'm wearing a different hat.
Where's that?
Oh, my other hat? I'll put this one back on again. At any rate, oh, thank you very much. All right, gotta, gotta be in character, eh? Dennis has already accused me of being out of character as a physician, I've already discussed eye disease, what the heck? I'm back in character, folks. Within the past week, there's been an issue in a neighborhood council, Glacell Park, in which somebody wanted to take pictures and was asked not to do so by the neighborhood council members. That, of course, violates the principles of the Brown Act, but the issue was that they may have been disruptive in their process. The issues of public comments at all levels, at the level of this organization, at the level of our neighborhood councils, is one of extreme importance that I think we need to really address and change. We come to you to talk about something that we think is important. I have yet to see Mr. Weiss's eyes. I'm going to wait a moment and see if they come up off the table. Mr. Weiss, would you care to say hello?
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Would you care, would you care to acknowledge with all of your 15 colleagues that when we come here, we come here for real important reasons?
Thank you very much.
I thank you for hearing me. I hope you can do something.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We're going to go on to, sorry, Mr. Weisman, we've gone over the two minutes. We are going down to our downtown, off, downtown, we have a speaker at downtown.
Yeah, my name is Michael Corion, and I was here the other day, and we're talking about the Chief Bratton issue. Again, I have a problem with the police department in my community, so I went to the police chief. I made an appointment with him. He's changed that appointment three times. So this is the incompetence of Captain Cho, or Captain Chi, or Captain Chai. When there's problems in the community and you've got corruption in your police department, I would think that the person in charge would be concerned, but like Chief Bratton stated, there's incompetence in the whole police department. Most of the people he has in charge are out to lunch, physically and mentally. They're not there. We call and make appointments, oh yes, we want to hear, oh yes, we want to see, oh yes, we want to talk to you, oh yes, we're concerned, then they change it. Oh, I'm too busy today, oh, I'm too busy next week, oh, I'm too busy next month. Well, the illegal activities of the Los Angeles Police Department continue. How is he ever going to find out what's going on and where the corruption is if he continues to cancel these appointments? I brought it to his staff's attention, they're aware of it, they refuse to correct the problems. I call that incompetent. How he got the position is just like the people sitting in the front office in, over there in Van Nuys. They don't get calls back, that's just the city's way. You know, there's double standards in this city, and if you sit on his horseshoe, you're aware of it. You guys eat, you guys drink, you guys do everything, and then the public can't do nothing. Let's leave the rules equally across the board, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corion. Colleagues, that's our last public speaker. Supposedly Ms. Hahn is moments away, seconds away. We will check on her time availability that she'll be here, and then we'll make a decision on the, whether we need to adjourn. Mr., yes?
Madam President, is it, is it appropriate for me to mention some things for the good of the order?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think, we also, we can use this time, if you had announcements that you were going to make today, we can use that as well.
I just wanted to remind our colleagues that in the legislature, their budget process, the mayor just signed the budget for the city of Los Angeles yesterday, but the budget process for the state of California will culminate, if on time, on the 1st of July. And right now, the most, shall I say, rigorous activity around the budget is occurring this month in June, and so please, for those of you who have projects in your district, or if you have transportation issues, environmental issues, parks you'd like to get funded or what have you, please contact your local legislators or any contacts you have up there in the legislature, and work with them to try to make sure that we get our fair share of funds from the state of California. It's very important for people to understand that, much like our budget process, changes can be made at any one of the committee meetings or hearings of the budget, and it's important for us to understand, up until the last minute, we can get changes, and especially when it comes to matters that may involve, be it $100,000 or $200,000 or things of that nature, those are very, I'm not saying automatic, but, but you can actually work on those types of matters up until the last minute, and even on larger matters as well. But in order to gain momentum, I think it's important for every single one of us, 15 council members, to focus on the issues that are facing our community, think about the kinds of things that we would like our state legislature to fund, and the funding is there, even though they say that the, the budget is tight, it's my understanding, I think the budget is, I have in my head, $120 billion, $140? I think it's $140? Yeah, the budget is $140 billion. When, yeah, 10 or 20 billion, give or take. But just, just to, to give an example of, for us to be mindful of when the legislature says, or when they say in, out of the governor's office that the budget's tight, just seven years ago in the budget, when I was the budget chairman, we had just crossed the $100 billion mark. So roll the clock forward, seven years later, we have another $40 billion to work with in the state of California. So please, do not fall prey to the idea that there isn't room for dialogue, there isn't room for us to make our case about the issues that are facing our community and the budget needs that we have. So please, keep trying hard, keep working hard, and take this opportunity to work with your legislators and the governor's office to get our matters in the budget. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Madam President, I'm going to help you out a lot here, because there's a lot of stuff going on tomorrow.
A lot of stuff happening in your district, thank you.
A lot of stuff tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you, colleagues, for all your patience.
First of all, at 10:00 AM tomorrow, we will be starting the 24-Hour Walk for Life, Relay for Life at Birmingham High School. It's a relay, a walk to raise money for cancer. Last year, the American Cancer Society ran the program at Birmingham High School, raised $79,000 for cancer research. My office took control of the project this year, we sponsored the project, we've already raised $189,000, and the walk hadn't even started yet, so we're really proud of this, we've done some good stuff. Anyone who wants to come out, Birmingham High School starts at 10:00 AM, goes through 10:00 AM Sunday, you can come out anytime, 24 hours, walk anytime you want, walk for five minutes, walk for five hours, we don't care, come out and support the Relay for Life. Item number two, at 11:30, beginning at Pettit Park in Granada Hills, is the Traffic Safety Fair, which is Ms. Gruel's very familiar with, where we give out child safety seats and information about traffic safety, it's run all day by our Valley Traffic Bureau, and anyone who wants to come out and participate, there's a lot of booths there, a lot of information, we'd love to have you. Beginning, actually, this afternoon at noon, it's going on now through Sunday night, is a salute to recreation. Some 80,000 people will come out to Northridge Park tomorrow, tonight, through Sunday, to celebrate our recreational parks here in the San Fernando Valley. They'll be giving a lot of awards to people who've done great volunteer work to make our parks better places to go with your families and participate. There are hundreds of booths there, rides for the children, food booths, dancing, cultural activities that goes on, it is a wonderful event, and you'll get a chance to take a look at the almost-finished Northridge Aquatic Center, which is just about a month away, and we're very proud of that. Following on that, for those that want to go on to Dodger Stadium, we have two San Fernando Valley schools playing for the city championship in baseball. Chatsworth High School is going up against Cleveland High School, one in my district, one across the street in Mr. Zine's, but services my district, so I can tell you right now, the West San Fernando Valley will have the city championship, one way or the other. So that's going on also. So there's a lot going on out in the 12th District, there's a lot going on in the San Fernando Valley, and for those of you who want to go out and support our schools, certainly we can go out to Dodger Stadium for a few bucks, watch the city championship of baseball for high school. Chatsworth High School, which won the national championship two times over the last four years, and this is our fourth trip to the city championship in five years, so we're very proud of them. And again, one way or the other, it's going to be in the West San Fernando Valley, the champions, so. And Ms. Gruel, Kennedy just missed, we thought it was going to be Kennedy versus Granada, I mean, Chatsworth, but they just missed, but Cleveland's in, so. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We will continue these at the end of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum. Madam President?
Wonderful, thank you. If you could, go through the first items, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 12 to June 13th.
That will be continued to June 13th.
There's also been a request to continue item 18 to June 15th.
That will be continued to June 15th.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 9 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing, recommendation for council action is to continue the hearings and ordinances to June 22nd.
Those will be continued to June 22nd.
Item 10 is a street vacation item in Council District 12, notice for public hearing, council should instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Thank you, that will be the order. Shall we open the roll on that, item number 10, Mr.? Yes, Mr. Smith?
I was going to ask if we could have a contingency, I understand there's still some issues not resolved, so if we can have a 30-day on that, appreciate it.
Okay, we'll continue item 10 for 30 days.
And that would be to July 3rd.
Thank you. Next items.
Items 11 through 19, with the exception of 18 that was continued, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Yes, do we have any specials?
Number 19.
Number 19, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks?
Number 14.
14. Mr. Zine? No? Okay, any other specials? Yes, in this group. If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved.
Items, items 20 through 36 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration. On item 29, the city clerk has submitted the resolution certifying the results of the May 15th general municipal election.
Mr. Parks, any specials?
I'd just like to continue 30-0 till next Tuesday.
Sorry, continue 30?
30-0.
30-0 will be continued.
No.
To next Tuesday. Any other specials, colleagues? 36. Okay, any other specials? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the remaining items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved. I apologize, I think there is a card, a public hearing's not been held on item number 20?
Actually, I believe the cards were removed on item 20 and moved to item 30.
Okay. So then 30 should be called special?
Actually, yes, Madam President.
So then we need to reconsider that item?
Except for 30-0 that was continued to Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll open, we'll reconsider that item. Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Okay, thank you. So the, except for 0, which will be continued to next Tuesday. Next items, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, that would take care of the items on the regular agenda. Do you wish to recess this meeting and go into the special?
Please.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum. Madam President?
Thank you, first order?
Item 30, on item 37, the mayor did sign the budget yesterday, and that was received by the city clerk's office, therefore no action is required.
Okay.
Item 38 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
That, no one wishes to call it special? Madam Clerk, open the roll on item 38, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That item's been approved. Next items.
Items 39 and 40 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration. On item 40, the agenda inadvertently left off the first moving clause, which was requesting the council to oppose the FCC's report and order, and further notice of proposed rulemaking, FCC 06-180, council would be adopting the original resolution.
We do have cards on that item, and no public hearing's been held, correct? Public hearing?
This is actually a public hearing not been held.
Okay, so that item will also be called special. Any other items? Yes, Ms.?
On 39, forthwith, please.
Forthwith on 39. I think there was also a request on 29 and 35 to go forthwith, I see that noted.
Madam President, we do need to vote on item 39.
Okay, that item 39 is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
That will go forthwith. We'll adjourn, or we'll continue that to the regular agenda, item 40?
And that would take you back to the items called special, and... And that would take you back to the items called special, and that would be...
And I would like to note 29 and 35 to go forthwith. So, first item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 14 by Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to make an amended motion on the CLA report that recommends support of this new legislation dealing with smoking in a vehicle, and ask that we amend that to include enhancement as a penalty for those passengers that are covered under Vehicle Code Section 27360, which are the, a whole chapter of listings for those passengers that are obligated to be restricted by a car seat, and so that we can add that as just a friendly amendment.
Mr. Smith?
The language for that would be to seek amendment, and with that, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, and ask, go forward.
We do, although the public hearing has been held, since you've been patient today, Ms. Pearman, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, I won't speak long, but I just wanted to say that, again, this is another fraction on only smokers' rights. They're probably not even really looking to see people being distracted and driving wrong, like, well, bad people was, I mean, people who use the cellphone incorrectly, and they drink, and now they're making a big deal about smoking in front of a minor, and the person could even be 16. And you need to get after bigger matters, matters that matter more, like crimes and gangs, and not just go after smokers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 eyes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 19 called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Ms. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Could we ask the CLA to come up, and Mr. Sadio's deputy as well? Good morning.
Good morning.
Could you please share with us what this is, for the public to understand?
Yes, sir, Meg Barkley, with the CLA's office. Before you, is a report recommending support of the Resolution Garcetti-Perry to support Senate Bill 2 introduced by Senator Sadio, which would require that jurisdictions zone emergency shelter by rights such that the homeless population in each jurisdiction could be accommodated, should the shelters be developed on those sites. The city of LA is currently the only city in the county of Los Angeles that does allow for emergency shelter by right in certain zones.
Could we ask the senator's deputy to introduce himself, and explain what this legislation is from your perspective?
Well, good morning. My name is Arturo Chavez, I'm the district director for Senator Gil Sadio's office. This bill would basically do the following, it would be including the housing element that all cities have to submit to the state, would have to submit in their housing element plan, zoning for emergency shelters and special needs facilities. You currently do this on a regular basis with affordable housing, low, moderate income housing, everything else. This would then allow each city to zone, in their respective cities, a zone that would allow the building of residential, or, I'm sorry, emergency shelters and special needs facilities. The city of Los Angeles, as well as the city of Santa Monica, already does this, they already comply with this. So, it is something that we're trying to, we call this the fair share zoning, since many of the other cities and surrounding communities do not do this, and do not comply with helping their homeless population. So, as we know, the city of Los Angeles has, runs the burden of this, and so we want the state to take care of homeless folks within their own neighborhoods and communities and cities.
Well, we look at LA County, which is 88 cities, of which we're the biggest, of course, and we look at Santa Monica, a smaller city, we look at two cities that truly have engaged in the issue of homelessness. Santa Monica, for a city of its size, has done a remarkable job in dealing with homelessness. The city of Los Angeles is working on it. We find the ambulance, the cabs will drop off some homeless person from somewhere else, from a hospital. We know some communities are totally safe, forget it, and they kick them out, and they end up in our city. I, in my particular case with Venice and other areas, have found an increase, an uptick in homelessness, as the downtown gentrification strategy and all of the issues of Safe Cities Initiative have brought more homeless into my area. What teeth is there in this to make these cities take their fair share of the responsibility of dealing with an issue that is everybody's issue?
Well, currently, there's two things. One is that the, since the housing element has to be submitted to the housing, HCD, Housing Community Development, for the state of California, if you are not compliant, they will not approve the plan. If the plan is not approved, the extreme position would be that the, all building, all building permits could be ceased in the city. So, that means no one could build in the city until such time as you comply with the housing element that's submitted and approved by HCD from the state. In addition, if a emergency shelter or special needs facility would not be able to build after it's been zoned by an approved plan by HCD, then they would in turn be able to sue the city under the anti-NIMBY clause that's included in this bill. Those are the two areas where you can have little teeth.
So, the anti-NIMBY clause means that you can't say, "Not in my backyard anymore, it's somebody else's problem," and push it off?
Yes, that's true. It's very clear, though, that you have to understand that this is after an individual city would zone the areas. So, it doesn't mean, where a lot of people have confusion here, is that it doesn't mean that you can provide or build anywhere, you have to build in the approved zoned area that is submitted by the city to the HCD and the state of California.
But how can you, a city says, how do you know how many homeless they have in their city? I mean, they might say, "We have no homeless in our city," to begin with. I'm talking about the smaller cities within LA County. How do we judge that and say, "Hey, you do have homeless, and you must do this?" I mean, how do you deal with that?
The bill addresses that in two things. The city of Los Angeles does that through law saw, which already provides that kind of count. Other cities don't, but we're asking them to make a homeless count. It's not specific how they do it, they need to, they may emulate the city of Los Angeles in terms of law saw's ability to help count. We, just to be on the record, San Francisco also does a good job of homeless, not only Santa Monica and Los Angeles. But yes, that's what they would do, they would actually have to do a homeless count, and submit that, and say, and prove that they do not have homelessness instead of that. They're also allowing people, just so people will be clear on this, they would allow for regionalization. If a city does turn around and say, "I don't have any homeless," or have a very small portion of homelessness in my city, then they can partner with regional areas in the city and put a regional area together also. So, it does allow for that. So, if you do not have anybody, then you could submit that and show the state or HCD that you do not have homelessness.
If this passes, what is the timeframe of them having to do this count? What if they refuse to do this count? How would you implement it?
Well, again, it requires that they do a count before they submit, and show to HCD.
Any plans at all?
Right.
Councilmember, also, as a condition of federal continuum of care funding through the McKinney-Vento Act, jurisdictions that receive entitlements under that grant are required to conduct a homeless count every two years, as a federal requirement.
Well, thank you both for that. And colleagues, this is a very interesting moment for all of us, that's why I call it special, not consent, so that we could talk about it and have an appreciation of an issue. We're all in this together. The homeless issue is everybody's issues. It's the federal government's issue, which has been totally irresponsible, this president and this government. The state is now stepping to the plate, the county has already, and the city, stepped to the plate. Since we're all in this together, we all need to take our fair share of social responsibilities when it comes to homeless. This just puts another element in the mix that makes the NIMBYism of some of the communities throughout the state, who say, "Not in my backyard, no matter what," and they push it to somebody else, it makes them stand up, and they have to focus on it. I urge us all to vote yes on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank the senator for his leadership in putting this before us.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 eyes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item 30 was called special for cards from the public.
Thank you. Miriam Fogler, followed by Sharon Brewer, then followed by Michael Carrion downtown at City Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Fogler.
Yeah, I got to make sure I take these with me. Good afternoon. I wanted to bring up the fact is that we need the money for the city, and the more money that comes into the city, the county, the state, and the federal, the better we're going to live, the government can function well, the public's going to have more faith in their leaders. They won't, we, this way, we don't have the chaos going on like in Iraq. What I'm trying to say is, the money here, the special events fees, some of them can be, you know, it's good for some of the stuff, but not all of it. Like the private companies, like Time Warner, out of one of the ones that was on the other day, $15,000, they could pick up the tab, the private companies. But I'm talking about the city, public for the public, services should be remaining, the money should be with the city, okay, the county, the state, and the federal, to provide public service to the public. And then, that brings more confidence and confidence in the leadership, the people then look to you for guidance, to show us, because God gave us our minds to do the good things in our life. That's what we're here for, okay? We're here to serve God, and we are here to make life on this planet better than when you came in. When you leave this world, make it better, okay? So, let's get down to the nitty-gritty, let's really have these special events audited, and see what the money is going, have them show where the money is being spent, how it's being spent, where it's going. That's what we should be doing. The same thing should be on our budget, okay? So, that's all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brewer, Sharon Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Special event monitor. On today's event, the special events, there are 19 special event items. There are 15 fee waivers with amounts totaling $41,292. There's one no amount submitted, it's a farmer's market, they can go as high as, I've seen, as $74,000. Three reimburse the city. I didn't get to talk on Wednesday for the special events, for some reason, they didn't do it. But I wanted to do an update on May 2007. You had 134 special event items, you had 106 waiver amounts totaling $630,531-plus. You had seven no-fee amounts submitted, and 21 reimbursed the city. That's just one month that you are allowing to be waived, and I think that you need to take and start looking at the reason that things are being waived. And I know you had a presentation about the book thing. When I hear that you have Target, and WAMU, and some of these other sponsors, it would be really nice if they could pick up the tab and maybe look at different venues than City Hall to have the event. Again, fee waivers need to be monitored more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to downtown, Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name's Michael Carrion, and I'm curious. I agree with the two ladies that spoke before, these fee waivers getting out of hand. To me, it's just a way to give the politicians to pay back to people who sponsored them. I've got three fee waivers in my community that I don't even know about. One, it says, "A parish." What parish? Probably got about 300 parishes. This does not tell me which parish is having an event, it just tells me a parish is having a special event. Is that going into somebody's pocket? Because his special event is all for him? I don't understand where these things are coming from, there's no description of them. We got $10,000 for a parish carnival? You got a circus? Or you got a dog and pony show? There's no explanation of where this money's going. Gentleman spoke earlier about his taxes being raised, or his fines being raised, yet you turn around and just give the money away. I had a question on the parish issues. I've come to my council office discussing these things, and they said, "We don't do parishes." Conflict of interest between state and church. Now, I'm starting to see it all over these billboards, these pamphlets. Somebody would, then Mr. Smith stated that when we come here, all we want are answers, and I need answers on these, where this money's going. Someone from your districts should be able to explain to us, the public, where our taxpaying dollars are going. When we voted, we voted you guys in so that you guys can tell us where our taxpaying dollars are going. During the election year, you're all for that. Once you get in office, we can't even talk to you, unless we come to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last speaker card on item number 30. Any comments? If not, Madam Clerk?
And Madam President?
Yes.
0 again would be continued to Tuesday.
0 would be continued. We have a card for you on item number 40, Ms. Pearman. Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 eyes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 36 called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Mr. Alacon.
Members, this is a resolution calling upon the Department of Public Works to come back with a community use plan for Lopez Canyon landfill. I just wanted to point out to the members that no additional money is being used for this project from the city general fund. In the course of closure of a landfill, there is a 30-year statutory process that incorporates into it recovery funding. So, built into the closure of Lopez Canyon, there is a recovery fund that can be used to bring back this area that has been tremendously damaged by decades of landfilling. And in this case, we're asking for them to come back with a community use plan. We have, most notably, recently announced that we're working with Department of Recreations and Parks and Public Works to design a multi-phased park development on the site. There are areas on the outskirts of the inner core of the landfill that are certainly in a position to be turned into a park very soon, one area in particular that may be a park within a year. And then, there's the settling area, which used to be the landfill proper, which maybe someday could be used for a driving range or otherwise. But in any case, I thought Mr. Wesson would take interest in that. Yes, I may be pandering just a little bit. But in any case, I just wanted you to know that there are no additional funds being requested for this, it is part of the recovery process, but we are sort of expediting the notion that it could, where we had used Canyon for a landfill, we will now have an opportunity over the course of the next 20 years to build multiple parks on the site, and make it an enjoyable feature for the community, instead of the burden that it was for the decades that we landfill there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I know there's a question that this, the reporter, go back to two committees, I think, both the, okay, I think it is the Arts Parks and Energy and Environment. So, that item being before us, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 eyes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item...
Madam President, if I could ask all the IGR items to go forthwith to the mayor, the legislative session ends in about a week, so it's good to get those.
Yes, thank you. We'll have all those go forthwith. Next item?
Item 40 was called special for cards from the public.
Yes, I know, I think Mr. Cardenas also wanted it called special. We'll hear from the public first, Mr. Cardenas? Thank you. Miriam Fogler and Donna Pearman.
I pay special attention to Channel 35 and 36, it's a very, they're very good informative stations, and I heard your, the lady here, Ms. Levin, speak last week at City Hall, she said she was suggesting to making like, one of the channels a C-span, the other one are informative. Well, the problem is, I don't want it to become so generalized. I want it to stay focused on the city issues, that, you know, and not to be generalized. And C-span has a tendency to get that way, and I don't want it to be that way. I want it to be very specific on the, focusing on the city. The, you know, the, all the programs on there is very, very, very well organized, and it gives you a lot of information about different things around the city, everything. And I, I don't want the federal government to tell us, mandate to us, what we need to do. We need to keep this local here. I don't like this. Federal government's coming in here and sticking their own, like telling us what we should do things. The more local, the better is for the people to be more involved. Not so much depth there at the top, because it's very, very difficult, because you have to filter down to down here, the local, and it's very difficult to get things done. So I like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pearman?
Sorry about the last thing. I did put on thirty, but I probably gave it to a wrong employee, so we'll just let it go on that. I just wanted to say that everything that Miriam said on number forty sounds correct, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes public comment. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. This resolution, on behalf of myself and Councilmember Rosendale, is basically to file a challenge in federal court as an intervenor, seeking to overturn and or modify the Federal Communications Commission's recent decision, which may limit our, or reduce our city authority in cable matters. If you recall, it was this past year, the state of California and the legislature, they passed a bill that basically shifted the focus and the responsibility and the, which level of government has authority over the cable franchising, and also the franchising of communication into households and businesses throughout any jurisdiction in the state. Yet at the same time, the federal government always reserves the, of, the opportunity to override or overturn, so to speak, or intervene above and beyond the state governments and/or the local governments. And that's why we need to be an intervenor, because the changes that were made last year has certainly weakened our ability to answer to our constituents when it comes to these matters. Yet now we have the federal government seeking to reduce the authority now of the city, of the state government of California and across the country. And that's something that, in my opinion, is not going to assist us in any way when it comes to customer service. It's not going to assist us in any way of making sure that these organizations are held accountable and that they are able to respond to their constituents. They've already taken it, by and large, away from the local level, which we had prior to this year. And to take it anywhere for, any further is, certainly to allow Washington to make those decisions or to be the intervenor is inappropriate. So I hope that we can get passage on this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, this is amazing right now, what's going on. We have been the bottom line dealing with customer service and issues of the cable industry. Look, I was a cable guy for twenty-two years. I know more about it than most of these characters who think they can talk about it. It was the accountability aspect that was critical to the cable subscriber, the cable customer. When I was a cable exec, I knew darn well that if I didn't perform right, there would be some consequences to this. Well, several things have happened. First, the state, in its wisdom, which I thought was outrageous, decided to preempt us, because they wanted the big phone companies in, which I'm all for that. I'm, I'm all for competition. I think customers should be able to pick between a satellite or a telephone hookup for their video or cable for their, I'm for that. But what they did was take away the teeth of regulating, the teeth of accountability. Now the federal government wants to do the same thing. Look, we know how this political process works. We know about special interests at every level of government. And on the federal level, let me tell you something. Those phone companies and those broadcasters and those cable casters have their hands around the throat of those elected. And they're just about to do us in completely, which basically means there will be no accountability, there will be no way in which we can interact, where the public access will be destroyed, something I strongly believed in. I had seven hundred public access producers producing thirty-five hundred shows every year. The electronic platform for the community will go. And I dare say that it is not in the interest of the customers, the consumers, our constituents, that this legislation goes forward. We should show our outrage, but I'm going to tell you something. It's like, you know, what, what is like a snowball in hell or something like that? Like, we have absolutely nothing of power back there. So we need to let our delegation know, both the senators and the congressional delegation, that the people come first, accountability comes first, and we should take a very strong position. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Bill, Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, I'd like some of the staff to come forward from the information technology staff to come forward and explain to us what is going on with, at the federal level, and to give us perhaps an example or two that we would affect our constituents.
Yes, I'm Ted Jordan from the City Attorney's Office.
Good morning. William Imperial from the Information Technology Agency, the Video Services Tech, Video Services Regulatory Division. Thank you, Councilman Cardenas. By way of background, what we expect to produce in our intervenor lawsuit is to challenge the authority of the FCC, the basic authority of the FCC, to actually issue this order that will, in effect, prohibit or possibly prohibit the City of Los Angeles from using PEG access fees according to the new state law. So we're going to have further limitations on the one percent PEG access fee that we thought we were entitled to if the FCC order is interpreted the way we see it being interpreted by certain parties, especially the cable companies and the telephone companies. I think that if you look at what the FCC order says, it says that at this time, they will not be affecting state franchising schemes, but they basically intend to do or act on that later at, if they feel that state franchising schemes are a barrier to new entrance. And that's been the, the basis or the foundation for the claim that, of the telephone companies in particular, that has started this whole new franchising push to take franchising from the state to the FCC. The intervenor lawsuit will basically tell the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, who will be filing, and eventually probably to the Supreme Court, that only Congress has the ability to deal with state, excuse me, with franchising, which is the foundation of the Telecommunications Act.
So what you've just described is an administrative act, correct? It wasn't an act of Congress that, that we're talking about?
Yes.
So we're challenging an order from, from the administrative level of that department at the federal level?
Yes, and, and actually, we started this action back in two thousand and five. This council allowed us to file the opposition to the initial notice of proposed rulemaking. So this is just a follow-up to that.
Now, wasn't it, wasn't the dialogue a year ago, if you roll the clock back, that the federal government was basically saying, "If you locally don't make some changes based on what the industry complaints are"? And then we had state legislation that was actually passed subsequent to that dialogue. And this seems to be violating that expectation that if we, excuse me, not we, the local government, but if each state went ahead and made changes proper and restructured their efforts on franchising, et cetera, that FERC wouldn't be taking action, for example, that would affect the state of California?
Yes, you're correct.
So we were encouraged, we were cajoled, we were threatened or what have you as a state to go ahead and pass some kind of legislation. And then once that has passed, whether we like it or not, whether we like it or not, now that FERC is, is, seems to be following through with their threat to say, "Well, then we're going to handle it."
You're correct. In fact, Congress had considered last year amendments to the telecom bill that is the basis for all franchising bills throughout the United States. And they did not act in regard to this area of the law, but the FCC now has.
Okay. So, so bottom line is what we're talking about. I'm sorry, it's not FERC, FCC. FCC is acting administratively. We are an intervenor in a court case to challenge them. And how long will it take for us to hopefully get down to the bottom of that through the judicial process?
We're not, we're not certain about that, because there are so many parties that have intervened. There were actually five or six separate lawsuits that were filed and five or six separate Circuit Court of Appeals throughout the United States. And they were just basically, excuse me, just recently joined in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. So it's very difficult for us to give you a timeline on that. If you look at litigation, this could actually go to the Sixth Circuit. A decision could be made. And if the FCC doesn't challenge the order and no one else does, it could go back to the FCC and could start over again. Or it could go on up to the Supreme Court. More likely than not, it'll probably go to the Supreme Court, because I don't think anyone is, on both sides of the fence, is going to be real happy with the outcome either way.
And in the meantime, what happens to their order?
Well, unless the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals issues a stay on the order, it would probably be given effect, but I'll let the City Attorney's Office answer that as well.
So if, if it's put in effect, what happens to this potential fee?
Well, if, only, if and only if the telephone companies that are state franchise holders and the incumbent cable operators, who will then become state franchise holders in two thousand and eight if they decide to obtain a state franchise, if they don't challenge the use of the city's PEG access fee, then it'll be moved. In other words, if we take the money and use it according to AB twenty-nine eighty-seven, our state law, we can actually continue to use that money the way we see fit, according to law, which is using that money to build our facilities and to provide for equipment. The FCC's holding is limited to only facilities which we would say is brick and mortar, no equipment. So potentially, we need the equipment actually to, in this instance, in regard to Channel thirty-five, we need that money to upgrade to a digital platform. We're looking at a possible potential cost of ten million dollars we couldn't use if the FCC order applies, and the telephone companies and the cable operators turn around and say, "You can't use that money for that purpose."
Is the state of California joining us in this challenge?
I believe that the local, in California, there is a push, and everybody is doing different things. There's amicus cry briefs that are being prepared right now. The, I believe that California League of Cities is opposing it, and the League of Cities throughout the United States is opposing it as well.
Opposing the order.
Opposing the order, yes.
So they're in line with us?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendale.
I showed a little anger, obviously, before, but just to point out the FCC's role in all of this. You know, we, the people, own the airwaves, but we don't. The special interests own the airwaves. In the eighties, the FCC said, "Oh, local television, you don't have to do any public service programming anymore. You don't have to give back to the community." So now we have schlock on television. We don't even know the issues. We don't understand what's going on around elections. We don't have a democracy where empowering people with information is key to the democratic process. Thank you FCC in the eighties to turn everything, including news, into eyeballs and profits and advertising, rather than the substance of giving back to the community something because we, the people, own the airwaves. This is a further emasculation of our ability to say anything about the airwaves, be it now the phone company, a nine-hundred-pound gorilla coming into the business, the cable industry and all of its shenanigans and games, or the satellite people. We, the people, are the big losers in all this. And I just want to thank Tony Cardenas for your leadership on this, seeing it for what it is, making it an issue and putting it in the sunshine. But I got to tell you, folks, we're going to lose on this. The politics back in Washington, as corrupt as it is historically on so many issues, shows its true teeth when it lets the FCC do this kind of stuff. Our senators, our congressional delegation should be standing behind the people and say, "We own the airwaves. This is not right." So thank you, Tony, for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
And Madam President, just for the council's information, the IGR matters that Councilmember Smith requested go forth with were items fourteen, fifteen, nineteen, thirty-eight, and forty.
Thank you. Is that the end of our items for today?
Council has motions for posting referral?
Those will be posted and referred, and I know the City Attorney, before you move on, is giving me the eye. Many of you, we had, he is giving me the eye. We had.
[inaudible]
I'm so sorry, Dan. We did announce earlier, prior to a quorum, that we did go through the public comment period. I want to again acknowledge those individuals who did speak earlier, and we gave them the option of speaking then or speaking once we had a quorum. Susan Rocha, Rick Nightingale, Miriam Fogler, Donna Pearman, Candido Merez, Sharon Brewer, Daniel Geis, and Daniel Weissman. Okay. And I'm sorry, and Michael Carrion, who came from downtown. So we did have those items posted and referred. Mr. Clerk, next item.
There are excuses on desk. Councilmember Parks requests to be excused for the meetings of July tenth, eleventh, thirteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, twentieth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, and the twenty-seventh, all for personal business. A motion is required.
That does not take a motion. Okay.
Yeah, actually, a motion is required on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion is required. Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Alacon seconds for Mr. Parks to go on vacation, it sounds like.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused November twenty-first and twenty-second for personal business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused to leave at noon on June twenty-second, and for the entire meetings of July thirteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and twentieth, all for personal business. A motion is also required.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Rosendale seconds.
And that does clear the desk, Madam President.
Thank you. Announcements. Mr. Alacon, followed by Mr. Parks.
Members, with all the consternation we've had about the Children's Museum since my arrival, let me, let me announce that we are going to be having a press conference next Monday, June fourth, at ten a.m., to announce how well they're doing on their fundraising, and relative to the challenge loan that we provided them. I do want to correct something for the record that, that I should have mentioned to you. It might have made the debate a little bit softer. What I, what I failed to remember at the time, but I know now, is that the Lopez Canyon Amenities Fund actually purchased the land where the Children's Museum is. And so for those who thought that the local community had not contributed, I want you to know that the local community gave six hundred thousand dollars, which the Children's Museum is using in the form of a one-dollar-a-year lease, in nineteen ninety-seven or eight money. So today, the value of that would be well over a million dollars. And so the, the neighborhood did contribute to this. But I, I wanted to invite you to this particular press conference, not so much to talk about the money, but to tour the Children's Museum. It's about eighty, eighty percent done, and so I want to welcome all of you to Lakeview Terrace. And Hanson Dam, if you need directions, please call my office. I also want to welcome the public to come see the, the construction of the Children's Museum. As I said, it's about eighty percent done. We're very confident that they will raise the money, but they still need more to go before they get the full complement of the matching grants. So we would encourage those of you who have the ability to give, to contribute to something that will be a very unique site in the country, right here in Los Angeles, in Lakeview Terrace, at the Children's Museum.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two announcements. On Sunday, June the third, at, starting at eleven a.m., a program starts at one. There'll be the Black Music a Month Celebration at the African-American Museum in Exposition Park. And also, on June the ninth, nine a.m. to twelve p.m., at the Beverly Hills Hilton Hotel on ninety-eight-hundred block of Wilshire, the West Angeles Church CDC, along with the Hollywood Black Film Festival, will be holding a workshop on business procurement opportunities in the entertainment industry. And that, they will include panelists from Fox, ABC, NBC, and CBS.
Mr. Rosendale.
Yes, Madam President. Tomorrow morning at ten o'clock at the Veterans' property in West L.A., we're going to be meeting with Iraqi and Afghanistan veterans and talk about services for veterans at that property. One of the great outcries I have right now, folks, is that we're not doing enough for the returnees coming back from our present war, and that VA property in West L.A. is designed for that purpose. I will be there. We will be with Iraqi and Afghan vets, and we will be talking about health services that are so critically needed for our veterans after we put them in harm's way. Thank you, Madam.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, as earlier in, in our presentations, we mentioned the book fair that's going to occur on the South City Hall steps on First and Main Street in downtown. It's for free. It's from ten a.m. to five p.m. As you can see in this picture, everyone is welcome, all of Los Angeles and beyond. We have some wonderful guests, and there's going to be books in every language and from all over the world going to be there, and it's going to be a great opportunity for families and children to enjoy themselves and to learn more about literacy, and also hopefully to get some more books for their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr., Ms. Rosendale, you had one more?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Zine's very anxious over here, so.
Let Mr. Zine go first, please.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. They're going to have Association of L.A. Deputy Sheriffs for Seventh Annual Banquet this evening, recognizing Medal of Valor with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. So I want to congratulate them on that. Also, on Sunday, the Jewish Federation Walk for Deferr is going to take place at the Jewish Community Center at two-two-six-two-two Van Owen Street. And that is in the West San Fernando Valley, eleven a.m. Also, the L.A. Pierce Symphony Winds Concert is going to take place at two-thirty on Sunday at sixty-two oh-one Winnetka. And on, there was one more item that we And on -- there was one more item that we had. Oh, the concerts in the park. The concerts in the park are starting in Warner Center Park this coming Sunday, and they'll run through the summer season every Sunday. So this Sunday, concert in the park, five a.m., five p.m., Warner Center Park on Topanga, south of Oxnard. And don't forget the Fourth of July fireworks extravaganza. I know a number of the fireworks displays are going to be curtailed this Fourth of July, but we're going to continue on with the one at Warner Center, Warner Center Park, and about 45,000 people show up there, so make your plans now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm hosting a town hall next Tuesday at seven p.m. at the Westchester Senior Center, which is in the complex at the corner of Manchester and Lincoln. It is about LAX and some alleged expansion slash moving runway plans that the community is very upset about. Janice Hahn is going to show up, as well as Bernard Parks, and we're inviting the Westchester Playa Del Rey community and all those who care about modernization of LAX but not expansion, all those who care about their community and not want to see a runway moved 340 feet north, which is outrageous. Please come on Tuesday at seven o'clock at the Westchester Senior Center. We're going to have Lawa give us a full presentation. We have a panel of people responding to it, and we want to hear from the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. We're going to be having down at Cabrillo Beach in the Harbor area, the Cabrillo Beach Sports Day tomorrow, Saturday, June second, nine a.m. to two p.m. And this is one of those great events where we're bringing kids from all over the city to participate and learn for a day some water sports. So we're actually going to take a day and teach kids how to kayak, windsurf, scuba diving, just a lot of water sports a lot of kids maybe have never been introduced to. So it's a great day down at Cabrillo. It's put on by our own Department of Parks and Recreation in collaboration with our Cabrillo Beach Bath House Association. So it should be a great day for a lot of kids in the city who don't always get a chance to learn water sports.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. I'd like to add, Colfax Elementary School has their big fair tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock, and encourage all to go to support our wonderful PTA that puts on this event to support the school there. Do we have adjourned motions today? We do. Thank you. If we could ask everyone to please rise. Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Priscilla Reckless Segal, who was the mother of Nan Snyder, who was a major community activist in Westchester, passed away just this week. She was born in St. Paul, Minnesota, on September tenth, 1922. Her husband, Dr. Sheldon Segal, and their three children, Linda and Nancy, who I just mentioned, and her grandchildren, Mark, David, and Beth and Aaron, are the survivors. Priscilla enjoyed a close-knit family and her many friends from Ladera Heights. She was an elegant lady with a sense of humor that just wouldn't quit. Her daughter Nan remembers how excited she was when her grandchildren were born, saying, I'll never forget when we were bringing Beth home from the hospital, how she ran in front of us, still moving car, to get her hands on that baby. She truly loved her grandchildren, her children, and everybody in the family. One of the very last things she did before she died was to brush her granddaughter Beth's hair. Deeply loved and cherished by her family and friends, Priscilla was easygoing, even-tempered, and quick with sage advice boiled down to pithy one-liners. She wanted people to enjoy light, to be lighthearted, responsible, and happy. She also had an amazing memory for people, their names, and even their phone numbers. She and her husband were co-founders of the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America. Services were held this week, but in lieu of flowers, her family would request contributions made to the Los Angeles chapter of the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourned motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting's now adjourned. Thank you.